Good, good. How about you? How's the baby?
She's, uh, almost one.
Wow. That is fast.
They were really fast.
I, I also would have thought like six months.
Say again?
I, I would have thought like six months.
No, it's, it feels like it should be that. No, yeah, it goes really, uh, when the weather turned nice, we were finally able to get her outside. Got her on the swings.
Oh. I miss those days.
All of the meeting order. All right, uh, Mr. Locke, do you have a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father, Son, and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President?
Mr. Dees.
Here.
Mrs. Carraro.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Bargo Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Mr. Rinsky.
Here.
All present?
Somebody make a motion to adjourn minutes from March 7th.
Second. Thank you so much.
Locke? I'm sorry. All pro voice acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Confirmation of appointments, reappointments, just to improve.
Yes. Uh, resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointment, reappointment, as indicated hereafter. We had a, uh, meeting yesterday and, um, went through most of them. We went through all of them. Uh, Children, Youth and Families Advisory Board, term to expire March 22nd, 2021. We have appointments of Reverend David G. Boss and Terry A. Thomas. And reappointments of Patricia Hunter and Tracy Piazza. Piazza. And, um, we have appointments to the Open Space Advisory Board. Uh, reappointments Judith Henkel and Claire Sadler, term to expire March 19th, 2021. And this was, uh, talked about and discussed last night's committee meeting. And we are, um, uh, moving it forward to full council.
Uh, discussion, questions, concerns? Sorry, questions, concerns? Seeing none, uh, please call the roll on all of them together.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. Carraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Locke.
Yes.
Ms. Bargo Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
And Mr. Dees.
Yes.
That is by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, now we come to courtesy of the floor. Uh, I have two people signed up. I just say if you come up, please state your name for the record, and you have, uh, five minutes. Uh, so the first I have is Mr. Jerry Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, good evening to, uh, yourself and all the councilmen or members in the body. Uh, yes, my name is Jerry Green. I'm the president of United Steelworkers, uh, over in Bethlehem. I come before you tonight to speak in regards to the, uh, uh, current, uh, contract negotiations that, uh, we have with the county over the Greystale matter with the registered nurses of, uh, of this county here. Um, I, I'm sad to tell you that the, that the talks haven't gone that well. Uh, I've been doing this contract since, uh, 2003 when we organized the RNs up here in Greystale. And, uh, this is probably one of the toughest ones that, uh, I've been involved with in the county for a long time. We've, uh, recently received the, uh, final best and last offer from the county. And, uh, it's the, uh, the opinion of our nurses committee, uh, and our social workers committee, as well as that, uh, they don't believe that, uh, we had, uh, enough, uh, negotiations during the process that, uh, would conclude into a, a fair, um, settlement of, uh, the contract. Uh, it's also their belief that the, uh, the consideration of these RNs, uh, that, uh, they are not only professionals, but how they save lives up there at the county. Our nurses and social workers, um, sat out five years, um, the la- under the last administration. And we understand that we can't hold this county executive or the, uh, or the administration for that. However, during that time, uh, we, uh, we, after that, we received a subpar settlement that, uh, wasn't, uh, acceptable to our folks as well. You know, we have personally, myself, uh, I feel that Maclure's trying to do the best he can here. Uh, he's inherited a mess from the last administration, there's no doubt about it. And let's just say that, uh, however, we have to re- we have to recognize the value of our RNs up in Greystale. It's my belief they're not only understaffed, but they're also underpaid. So, as I stand before you tonight, I'm not going to take up much more time of yours. I've been through, in front of council many a times. We would just ask council if they would take the time to maybe sit down with the county exec and maybe the negotiating team and administration and see if in fact there is a way to try to make this, uh, a, a contract that would be, uh, in the best interest of the county and of our nurses and the residents as well. You will be hearing from us another nurse, uh, right after me who will explain some more, uh, since she is on the floor every day. And, uh, I appreciate your time. I appreciate hearing to me, and thank you very much. God bless all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Um, all right. Uh, the next I have is Valerie McCula.
Oh, that's Valerie. Okay, Valerie.
If you could come up and repeat your name and, uh, you have five minutes then.
Thank you, sir. You got it right, Valerie McCula. Um, good evening. I just wanted to come before you today and give you my take on what's going on at Greystale. I have been employed at Greystale since June of 2001. So, quite a long time. I've been through quite a few administrations. I remember when Mr. McClure used to sit in the seats where you all are. I'm also, uh, county, um, I'm a county, where do I live? I live in Northampton County, that's where I live, sorry. But anyways, um, I have not had any FMLA or IFMLA since 2001, just as a sidebar. But the first thing I'd like to be sure, that I'm clear on what the goal of the county is for Greystale. It's my belief that it is to provide the highest level of care for the re- the Greystale residents without causing a hardship on the county taxpayers. That's, I mean, that's what I believe is everyone's goal. We want to do the best we can for the residents at, at limited to no cost to the taxpayers. So then why are we making a $5.5 million profit? Would be the first thing I would want to know. When Premier was running Greystale, they were charging $500,000 a year. They're no longer charging $500,000 a year because you guys are running Greystale. The staffing is the biggest issue. And I am an RN, and I do, um, support the RNs and the social workers, but it doesn't end there for me. I have LPNs, I have aides. I need them all to be fully staffed so that the residents can get the care that they deserve. And I feel like currently, right now, with our staffing ratios the way they are, I know we do this PPD number, which is your per day, per care, and I know we're above the average at 3.4 hours a day. So let's just think about that. You're in a full-time care facility, 24 hours a day. You can't take yourself to the bathroom, you can't feed yourself, you can't get, wash yourself, you can't do anything for yourself. But don't worry, we're going to give you 3.4 hours in a 24-hour period. To me, that is just not acceptable. I don't care that the, the overall 2.7, we're above that, because when I look at the residents that have come to Greystale because they have nowhere else to go, we should be providing the best care we possibly can for them. And with our current staffing ratios, we, the numbers, I just want to review the numbers. So RNs, we currently have 18 full-time RN positions. We are missing 36, I don't know where the point two is, I don't know how you work part, point two full-time, but we're missing 36 full-time RNs. So right there is a big hardship for the RNs. We are now doing the work of more than twice the number of people we're supposed to have. So our contract, we tried to negotiate for just the RNs and the social workers. But I want to stop to talk a little bit about the LPNs and the aides. Because again, even though they're not in my union, this isn't a union issue. This is a resident issue. We're down 88.4 aides. Unfortunately, I don't know the number that we're supposed to have because I'm not an aide, but 88.4 sounds like a lot of aides to not have. And that's only the full-time. I know the new thing that we're doing with the breakdown is that every full-timer is supposed to have a corresponding part-timer. So, I don't have a part-timer. Neither of my LPNs have part-timers. So when they're not at work, no one does their, that someone else that doesn't know our residents does their job. When I'm not at work, one of my LPNs has to sit at my desk and try to do my job. There are multiple floors that don't have any RNs. They're running with three LPNs, and it's not to say that they don't know what they're doing, but they're not trained the same way. They haven't had the training because staffing is so short, we can't afford to train people. They can't leave the units. They need to be on the floor providing care. Again, I, the PPD is what the PPD is. We're down 30.9 aides, or LPNs rather, which is less than the number of RNs, and that's a good number because we have more LPNs in Greystale than we do RNs. Now unfortunately for the aides and the LPNs, they're in an ASME union which already settled the contract, they are also in that contract with the kitchen, um, down 6.7. The laundry, which we're down three. And housekeeping, which was down 2.1. And not to say that those things aren't important. We need to have food, we need to have clean clothes, we need all of those things.
I'm, I'm going to, because this is Greystale and, and I, employees came up, you'll have to excuse me, so I can get my doorbell done here. But, uh, I'll give you an extra minute, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead. My discretion.
When I come onto my floor in the morning, it's a 38-bed facility. I have 38 residents, they're all females, they all have the things they like, the way they like it, and they have no problem telling you what they like. When the nurses go out to pass the meds, the LPNs, I have the same exact number of LPNs on the unit that I have housekeepers. That's right, the same number of people that are passing medications to residents as people that are cleaning the floor. Not, nothing against our housekeeping, but some of that has to be restructured. And when ASME approves a contract that benefits the kitchen, the laundry, and the housekeeping, it doesn't benefit the aides and the nurses, the LPNs. And those are the people that are providing the direct hands-on care.
Do you, uh, do you have more?
I have questions that I could answer from the earlier meeting, but I don't have to if you don't want me to. Some clarifications.
Well, we, give everybody five minutes.
Yeah, I know.
And I gave you more. I mean, uh, this is an important topic. I don't know what questions would be answered up here right now because we just got our report. Was there anyone else who was here on the same, same subject that had wanted to con- talk to us? All right. Is anybody willing to cede their time or some of their time?
I feel like we only have one, one more? Two more?
Well, they still have a right, well, they still have a right to come up.
Sure.
I mean, uh, uh, can you, can you sum- summarize what you're going to do, or your questions or whatever it is in 30 seconds?
Oh, probably not, but I could do my best.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I'm only doing it because...
Right. The way they tried to settle all of the union contracts this year was they tried to do an across-the-board union contract package. So when we sat down to negotiate, there was no negotiation. This is the package, we're sticking to the package, this is the package. I don't know if the people in the other unions are providing the kind of care to the residents like we are. I don't know if they're working short-staffed like we are. I know that promises may have been made that this was going to be across the board, but it is not working for the residents at Greystale.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, I appreciate, you know?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Uh, we have no one else signed up, but certainly you're entitled to five minutes of courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? If you could please come up and state your name?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, you have five minutes.
Okay, my name is Shalonda Mondo. I am also an employee at Greystale.
Just so we don't, I don't want, and you haven't, I'm not starting your time yet. You, you need, you want, need it spelled just so we make sure we don't make a mistake? Oh, she'll look it up. Okay, I just want to be sure, we don't want to, we're not trying to offend anybody with spelling.
She didn't sign in.
No, that's okay.
That's fine.
Would you like me to spell?
No, you don't have to sign anything. You, you're fine. Courtesy of the floor, anybody who wants to talk about anything has their shot, so go ahead. Get, you have five minutes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I am also an employee at Greystale. Um, I have been working there since 2011. I started there as a CNA, and I went back to school and became an LPN. Since becoming an LPN, I have seen a great difference in staffing over the past two years. Um, as an LPN on night shift, I have been night shift the whole entire time I've been employed there. As an LPN on night shift, staffing is, uh, a great issue. I am alone on the floor by myself with 32 residents. With that being said, when things go wrong on 11 to 7, it's me by myself with two aides for 32 residents. When I was afloat in our tower floors, we had 50 residents for one nurse and two aides. So if something goes wrong, it's me by myself on the floor with no help. Supervisors is also an issue. When I need help, we have a rule here, when someone falls on the floor, we have to call for help, we need a supervisor. Again, staffing, sometimes our residents are on the floor for half an hour waiting for someone to come and assist, assess them because LPNs are not allowed to move the resident or assess them without a RN being present. When we want to talk about quality of care and our residents, my personal belief is sometimes being on that floor is causing them more pain than the fall itself. A lot of times, the resident is, um, sitting there, can you please get me up? Can you please get me up? And we can't because we're waiting on a supervisor. Just recently, which is really why I'm here, is our supervisors were on the units passing meds, so we had no supervision really in the building because they were on med cards passing meds because we were short-staffed. We had so many call-outs, we had no extra help. So, when we needed help, we had to wait an extended amount of time for someone to come to aid. Quality of care, I don't believe that any resident should be waiting, or me as a nurse should be waiting for help for that amount of time when a resident is in need. Another thing is me, myself, as 11 to 7 nurse, 3 to 11 is one of the shifts that are, is majorly understaffed. So, a lot of doubles voluntarily, sometimes I, they send out messages for help. So I come in because the residents need, you know, they need the nurse there. The past month, I can say I did about, uh, 17 doubles. That is causing a burnout. Mistakes happen. I try to be very careful, but because of staffing, you have nurses that are doing 12 hours, 16 hours, and we still are getting phone calls at 7:02 to ask to stay overtime because of staffing. From my understanding, we are only allowed to be mandated if there was a weather issue. But they're not using the word mandating, they're saying, "We need your help, we don't have people, can you stay?" I don't believe that if I'm doing 16 hours and I'm on my third double, you should be calling me and asking me to stay because I'm burnt out. That's not really fair for the resident and it's not fair for me. If you had enough employees here, if you did something else, we wouldn't really have this issue. Also...
Let me, you have a minute left, but I, I'm willing to, my discretion, take a, a little bit of time, but if you have some, want to summarize?
Okay. Also, our recent contract that was just signed, I am AS- ASME, uh, employee. Um, as a union member, we were not given any time when the union, uh, contract was negotiated. It was kind of like, okay, we're going to sign the contract, this is the date, we came in, they told us what it is, and that was it. A lot of things was pulled away from us. Sick time, basically, we have no sick time. We accrue it, we can't use it. If we use it, we're penalized for it. So what people are starting to do is use IFMLA. So, if everybody starts using their IFMLA, we're back to the staffing issue because one, you don't get penalized for it, but you can call out, and then we're back to the same staffing issue. That, that's basically my biggest issue, is staffing, because I am a nurse, because I can do an aide's job, but an aide can't do my job. So in the long, you know, in long story short, staffing is a major problem at Greystale. So if there's some kind of incentive maybe, or something that can be done for us to get more hands, I, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, you have a right, go ahead.
So just, just real quick, I think we all agree, and I think administration, you've been talking about it, staffing. I mean, we're, I think we're trying different programs to get people in there. Do you have any thoughts or, or suggestions on, on ramping up staffing?
I do. Um, I think maybe we can either try, um, 12-hour shifts could be one. Or I think we can maybe offer, um, sign-on bonuses, or, um, some kind of, if you bring some, bring, like a referral bonus, something like that. You refer two people a month or something like that. Maybe it'll help.
Sure.
But I believe 12-hour shifts will kind of cover the gap. You don't have to offer it for everyone because I know some of the people who have been there 12, 15, 20-plus years maybe are not for it. But, um, I think it would alleviate some of the, um, some of the hole, some of the gaps with staffing.
I definitely appreciate it, and, and I mean, I guess maybe encourage or, or offer other employees there that, that, you know, to, to bring forward i- ideas as well, and you know, I'm sure they're, they're receptive to it. Uh, but I, I know, we agree and, and we, you know, we keep trying different policies to, to fill it, and we, we definitely recognize the burnout and the safety of the, the residents and even the, the staff there. So, uh, I think we would definitely encourage any ideas to help fill that void.
I appreciate it.
I'm going to keep it short.
Mr. Chairman? Ms. Rinsky, you could just make it brief.
I'm going to make it brief. So, do you see any difference between when Premier ran and now we have this staff? Do you see any difference in the level of effort trying to mitigate these situations that you're talking about?
Honestly, um, for staffing purposes? No.
Okay.
No, I do not. Again, I am assigned to one unit. I used to, I used to float. I do know that there were postings put up for more positions to get more aides on floors. However, with the call-out situation and the new contract that was passed for our union, people are still trying to find a way around, um, the call-out. So with the IFMLA, uh, we're still short-staffed.
So that's the workaround with the IFMLA?
Yes.
So, this, this was the same problem they had with Premier as well? Premier would ask you to co- come in as well, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I think Mr. McGee, you had your hand up.
Just one thing, I meant to pick up on that you had answered her question. Um, you said you were once afloat and now you're permanently assigned.
Yes.
So that's something new that just happened recently?
Um, I, I floated for about six years and I've been assigned to a floor now for a little over a year.
Okay. And one last question. So how long has this understaffing, um, situation? You've been there since your tenure?
Yes. The understaffing, I believe, has always been an issue, but it's progressively gotten worse over time. And I would say within the last, um, I would say within the last year, it's gotten even more so worse because, um, our pre-dams, our pre-dam contract has changed, um, our block scheduling has changed, our block people who were blocked used to be able to pick up extra days. Now our blocks are only allowed their block days, which is four days a month. They used to be able to work up to nine days as pay period. Now they're just, they're four days. So when we used to have those extra bodies, we, we don't have them anymore. They have to actually request the time. So, that's another, uh, issue that we have.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you, and we always like to hear you. Everybody's here, administration directors, council, appreciate you coming and speaking to us. Thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else? Please come up and state your name.
My name is Tanya DiPier Domenico.
Tanya.
Sorry? Terry?
Tanya.
Tanya.
DiPier Domenico. I am the charge nurse on your short-term rehab unit. We get a lot of people from the community, we're high turnover, um, and you asked the question, what you think we can do? I can tell you, I'm in the steelworkers, I'm an RN. You can increase our wage. And here's why. I realize that you didn't inherit, you, you're inheriting this problem like Jerry talked about. I've been a nurse for years. I was an ICU nurse and, and I have a lot of experience, as do the rest of my coworkers. You're paying me the same rate as somebody sitting next to me that's a brand-new nurse, a brand-new nurse. And it's been brought to my attention at some time that we all take the same test? Well, like I said there, and I'll say now, if you go into a code, you'd want me jumping on your chest more than you would want a brand-new nurse. The morale is at an all-time low. We feel completely degraded because there's just, there's, it's, it's, it's kind of horrifying sometimes. I leave my job crying. I usually work about 62 hours a week. Now, most of that is on mine, um, my time, like Shalonda was saying. But it's three hours, three days of a 16-hour shift, and then you're asked to work again. And even if you say no, I've been called two and three times, "No, I can't do it, you don't want me." My, my own patients are like, "No, no, no, please go home, Tanya, go to bed." They don't want me. Staffing is an issue, but I can tell you as an RN, my friends are RNs. I wouldn't get them in here at their starting rate. And I know a lot of people look at me like I'm crazy and I'm not being greedy, but the starting rate is not that super. And if we're not going to have anything to look forward to, meaning a step program, or someplace to improve, um, and move up to, there's no incentive. Like coming in at a rate is fine, but if you take me as my years of experience and put me into that, and then the next block you move up, that's incentive. Sign-on bonuses are, are one thing, but what about the people that have been there 10 years? I've been there 10 years. Val's been there forever. Sorry, Val. But there's really, you know, I've been told that the pension, the, um, the pension and the benefits are what bringing people in. The pension and benefits are fine, but millennials, they're not looking at a pension. I, I am, because I'm not a millennial, but they're not. So we need to bring in people, but we also need to take care of the people that we have. I mean, I take care of a lot of families in this community. Sometimes they're my own. And I, in my unit, I sh- I want to ship them out because that's my goal, is to get them out, get them out, get them where they're going because I'm short-term rehab. But, you know, honestly, that's, that's how you're going to do it. That's how you're going to do it.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council under courtesy of the floor? Seeing no one?
There's one back there.
I'm sorry, I didn't see a hand.
There's one over there.
Behind the pillar. Oh, I, I see one person, two hands, but... Hey, come on. I don't care, either one. He's a wise guy, I don't even, I don't even know what he's saying. Now, give your name and...
My name is Julie Stout. I have been a county employee for 18 years. I am a CNA at Greystale. It's bad. When I say it's bad, it's bad. I have 50 residents on my floor, I'm a day-shift CNA. Um, this past Saturday, I walked in to three aides. When I say three aides, I'm...
When I say three aides, I mean three aides. Three aides for 50 residents. They slowly sent us a fourth, they slowly sent us a fifth, and when I say a fifth aide, then they slowly pulled it. So that left four people to do 50 residents' care, bathe, wash, dress, feed, turn, reposition, for eight hours, four people. The morale stinks. Like, when I say stinks, it stinks. We have coworkers who are at each other's throats. We have residents who don't know how to express, how to feel, how to grieve, how to anything, cuz they see us struggling as employees to try to provide for them, eight hours. So then, eight hours comes, 3:00, sometimes we have to stay, sometimes we can't leave. I can't go get my kids, I can't make dinner, I can't do anything, cuz I have to stay there till somebody comes or leaves me, or we get told that we're allowed to leave. I do extra shifts. Today was my ninth day in a row that I did. Nine days in a row, on my own time. But I did it not for me, for my residents, cuz without me, they have nothing. That's all I have to say.
Well, I guess, ask the same question, you know, do you have ideas?
I don't have ideas, cuz we're just at a loss. Like, I mean, it stinks. It really, it's bad. It's really bad. The falls are tremendous. Bed sores, tremendous. We don't have enough help. We don't. And that goes for all three shifts. That's not just day shift. I mean, on my floor, I'm a tower resident, I'm a tower aide, sorry, so my floor, there's 50 residents. We're supposed to have seven staff, seven staff employees, full-time employees. We're lucky if we have six. Some days, we have five, because of staffing.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let me just say that if anyone else, and if you wanna speak, just walk up, because I'm not seeing hands apparently. Please come up, state your name, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Myers. I've been a CNA at Greystale for a couple of years now. I've been there since 2015. I have two things I like to try to squeeze in here. One is a question from one of my coworkers who couldn't be here today. Since the new contract had came in from AFSMI with the CNAs and the LPNs, new contract that we just went through, they took away, like, somebody else had been saying about, they took away like sick time and different days that we had. And the part-timers were especially affected by this. And you're only allowed to do like a switch once per pay period. They took away these 599 days. So if you find people to work for you, you still can't have off. And I just think that that's wrong. I don't know. If you find someone to work for you, and you can't, you know, you don't have any days to use. I mean, most of the time, we do have to find somebody to work for us, cuz management can't, but that's one of the issues. Another issue is with the short-staffing, of course, everyone's been mentioning that. And another thing is the mandation. I've looked up online about, if you guys have ever heard of Act 102, it's like a healthcare.
We heard about it tonight, for sure.
I've read that very thoroughly, and I do believe that there's a lot going on with that that's not right. Cuz I don't believe that our supervisors or whoever in charge is going through the proper procedures to be mandating people, cuz they'll call the floor, and they'll say that there's been so many call-offs, when I'll be sitting on a floor that has a direct line to the call-offs. And there'll be maybe one or two that roll through. And I don't know how, in a building with so many people, that they can say that. So to me, it looks like they're trying to mandate and cover up for the short-staffing, which is chronic, which we all know about. So there's a lot going on with that, you know, and all of us have lives outside of Greystale and responsibilities that we need to take care of. And it's just, it's just very disheartening when you go in for an eight-hour shift, and you work short, and you do as much as you can, and then you're told to stay. So that, that's pretty much it.
That's fine. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Under courtesy of the floor.
We have one coming.
I just didn't know. Oh, okay. If you would, if you would state your name and.
Hi, my name is Tina Cologne. I'm afloat nurse at Greystale. I just wanted to say staffing is bad, as you're hearing today. We just need to get nurses in. We need to get staff in. I know it's, everybody's trying. Administration is trying. Right now, me and another nurse, Kirsten, we came up with this idea to float, to cover the floors that don't have nurses, registered nurses. So we cover five, six floors that have an LPN at the desk. So we're trying. We're not just picking up, leaving, you know, finding other jobs that are paying more, you know, we're trying to stay here. I've been a nurse at Greystale for seven years. Yeah, we need help. We need, we need to, you know, an incentive to stay. Like, everybody else is like, when people come in, why are you here? Why are you still here? And we know everybody's short. Everywhere's short, the hospitals are short. But we just, we need help. We need someone to say, hey, okay, we understand, and it's not about the negotiations, and... I mean, it is, but, you know, we wanna see, hey, we understand that you're short, we wanna try and keep you guys, we wanna... We're here for the residents. I've been there seven years. I worked 3 to 11, I was short there, and then I went to day shift. And before, you couldn't get in day shift. Everybody, there was positions, there was nurses. You had to wait years for day shift. Now, there's so many positions available. We're covering multiple floors. It's not good for the residents. The residents, you know, they need people, they need people, you know, we're here, we're in charge of everybody. We're in charge of the aides, the LPNs. We just need help. And administration's trying, you know, Dawn's wonderful, like, you know, we meet with her, and we try and come up with new ideas. We just need more. There's only so much we can do, and, you know, we, we'd like help.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council on any topic? I just wanna be sure we got everybody. Come on up, if you would give your name, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Candita Fairchild, and I've been at Greystale since 1995. I was an aide there, and they sent me to school in 2000, and I became an LPN. And I have never seen days like we have right now. We get alerts every day that they need help. We get alerts when the schedules come out. We have alerts for nurses, RNs, alerts for LPNs, and alerts for aides, every day. And even when the schedule comes out, that they're looking for help for these shifts and days. And there have been times, I mean, I'm seven to three, and I have a four-year-old who's in elementary school, and I try to get home, and I've already been kept there until after 6:00 PM, because they say nobody is allowed to leave until we're covered. It's exhausting. I mean, I get there. I don't call out. I'm there every day. Okay, when it snows and other places are closed, Greystale isn't closed, and I hit and killed a woman trying to get to work. And I still go to work, but I'll tell you what, a bakery is looking a lot much nicer for me, because I'm helping the aides. I'm drowning, I'm watching, you know, I'm trying to give them their meds. We're trying to get their meals. There are people still in bed, you know, that we haven't been able to get to. And we're trying to feed the two meals that we get during day shift, and we're trying to give them their meds, and give them each a bath, and people have to go to the bathroom. When I wake up, I have to go to the bathroom, but they can't go, they need us. And this isn't cutting it, and I don't know what to do anymore. And to work doubles, I'm exhausted to even go in and do my one shift, because I don't know how I'm gonna get through. And they say the trickle-in, like, when my nurses are off, I start with nobody. I do two cart counts with 11 to 7, and they'll say, oh, they're on their way. And then at 7:40, another nurse comes, so I take the cart, because meds are due, and I'm up there. And then 8:40, another nurse comes, and then I can quick-run to the desk and see what I need to get together, and wear my RN shoes, and cover the desk for the RN, you know, and I don't know what to do anymore. And I've been there a long time, and 11 years, I don't know that I'll make it 11 years anymore, if I stay there.
Thank you, thank you for coming up. I mean, thank you, I appreciate you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council under courtesy of the floor? Seeing no one? Let me just, let me just say this. We did have a meeting just before, and we did talk about Greystale. We've had meetings. And we had a council meeting with Greystale, it was specifically on the agenda, our last meeting. And we've heard from the administration, the executive branch, administrators, they do the contract negotiations. We end up approving them, but that's how it works. However, we do want to hear from you, and appreciate you coming out and explaining to us your view. And I would say if you have any further communication, or you wanna get something to us, feel free to send it to Ms. Zembo. Ms. Vorgo Hefner is Chair of the Human Services Committee. I'm sure she would be more than willing to review anything, at least from our perspective as a council. But again, I wanna thank you, and we always, we do wanna do as you've alluded to. We understand how important Greystale is, and we certainly understand how important the employees are. And as you said, some of you said, we don't even know sometimes what's the best road to take. But we want to improve. We all want to improve. So again, thank you very much. There's no one else then that for courtesy of the floor? Seeing none? We go to the county executives' report. Mr. Executive, do you have a report?
Hello. Again, I just wanna reflect upon the tremendous service of the folks that you heard from here tonight. The tremendous dedication, the love of the residents at Greystale, and the fine care that, you know, that Val talked about, and some of the other women who were up here were talking about. They are to be commended. They have our thanks. The reason I was the only person to oppose the privatization of Greystale, I was alone, and Mrs. Ferraro joined us, and we started to fight back, was because of these people. So they could continue to have the jobs they have in the county-owned facility, because it's our moral obligation. And we do support them, and we are working very hard, mightily, to support them, get more help in there for them. But I think Val hit the nose on the head. She framed it perfectly. What is our goal with respect to Greystale? Our goal is to provide the best possible resident care while not overburdening the taxpayer. One of the reasons that Greystale became jeopardized, for sale to a for-profit corporation, was that there were county contributions of $4, $5, $6 million year over year. And at some point, the taxpayers weren't going to be willing to make that payment. So there is a balance to be struck. We've started to work on that. We'll continue to work on that, and we'll keep fighting, we'll keep fighting for them, because they are the backbone of the place, and they just have my deepest respect for the dignity of the work they do. And I thank them for being here to tell their story, because we, during our committee meetings, we hear the numbers, right? But they put a human face to what's actually going on, and it's so important that they're here. You know, my eyes welled up as well as some of yours did, listening to some of those stories. So it's important, and I thank them for being here. Couple facts. We had a couple AFSMI folks. The AFSMI contract was overwhelmingly, not everybody voted for it, but it was overwhelmingly approved. So that's just a fact. They have a contract in place. It'll be in place for three years. And I will tell you, we were open to the idea of 12-hour shifts. AFSMI said no. We were open to the idea of sign-on bonuses. AFSMI said no. So these are things that are negotiated. These are things we were willing to think about and to do.
Do the employees know, like, so in the negotiation?
I don't know what they know. I don't know what their process is. That's the collective bargaining process, in that we can't talk to them about it. They're represented. But I can tell you that we were open to those things, and they didn't happen. With respect to the 99 days that were alluded to, they were negotiated, and AFSMI agreed to take them out of the contract. So, you know, that's collective bargain. With respect to the steelworkers, you know, I have so much respect for what our RNs do and what our social workers do, and I wish we could pay them more money. But we have 1,100 employees that already agreed to the pattern. And the pattern is, as we've talked about before, a 4.5% raise in the first year. And it's not just 4.5%, it's a step increase. So that puts you even a little further ahead than 2% and 2% in the second and third year. And remember, these raises compound. Now, the steelworkers went from 2011 to 2015 without a raise. They did not agree to a contract. They did not, there was an offer, there was never an agreement between the administration and the steelworkers. If they would've agreed to that contract, they would've had 15.5% more money in their pockets today than they do now. And as has been alluded to, and I think Val conceded, or Jerry conceded, we can't make up the whole 15.5% in one contract. I would love to be able to do that, but then I couldn't have eliminated the co-insurance for all of our employees in this county. We eliminated the dreaded co-insurance, we eliminated the gap insurance. We've offered two healthcare plans, a PPO and an HSA, so we just couldn't do it. And that's why we developed what we thought was a very fair pattern. The 8.5% over three years is, we believe, fair, when you consider how much extra money is going into your pocket because of health insurance. Now, currently, the RNs pay, contribute, I believe, less to their health insurance under their current rules than other employees do. So for most of the other unions, it'd be about 6% in the first year of a raise, because of what they contribute currently before they agreed to the new contract. For the RNs, it'd probably be more like 5% in the first year. So it's really a 5% raise when you consider the changes in the healthcare. And I really, I hope we can get to an agreement with them, cuz I'd like to see them get into healthcare. I'd like to see them understand that we can't make up all the ground that's been lost through the years with one contract. And in the future, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, we'll have, in three years, we'll have these negotiations again, and maybe the negotiators will have a different view about sign-on bonuses and getting folks in.
Another, you know, if staffing is such a problem at Greystale, maybe we can see that we'll never get to the numbers we need for the residents that we have. Is there any thought or reducing the number of beds?
No. No. You will materially affect the bottom line, and you'll be back to county contribution in no time, millions of dollars, and it's not an answer. And, you know, the Department of Health is there all the time. We get a notification of a complaint once or twice a week. And initially, I have to tell you, that annoyed me, but now I'm glad for them. I'm glad the Department of Health is in Greystale all the time, looking around, investigating these complaints, that are almost always unsubstantiated. This is a good thing.
One of the things I know you just said, it's always been an issue, is if you're not reducing beds, you then reduce your revenues coming in, but if you have more beds, you need staff. So that has been a battle from day one. I remember the one time we did reduce beds, and some of the senior staff, if I remember, it was the only time we did it, was when the state gave us an incentive. I forget how many millions, I think Mr. Barr remembers. But we got X amount of dollars to drop, I forget how many beds it was at the time. And that helped, cuz over the long term, that would defray. But you pointed out one of the.
The other thing about giving up beds, too, if you give up those licenses, you might not get them back. They're gone.
No, I had a question. One of the workers, I think it was Tanya, had said that she, that someone who just comes in is making the same amount as her, and she's been there for years, that she wants a reward, not her specifically, but that people who have been there a long time deserve. not, not her specifically, but that people who have been there a long time deserve some sort of step increase beyond what the people are, who, who's coming, just coming in. You see what I'm saying, right?
I, I do, and I don't think that happens.
That doesn't hap, what doesn't happen? It doesn't happen that somebody comes in-
That somebody starts and is making more money than her?
Not more, but the same amount.
They have to negotiate for a step in 15%.
Okay.
So does that happen?
Does that happen?
We're, we're going, this is the first step, this, this contract, we're going to provide the first step in terms of-
So is there any, so is there any way to negotiate people who have been there for a certain period of time, get some differentiation?
Yes, they need to ratify this contract. It's the first step.
This is the first step?
Ratify this contract.
They have to ratify this contract?
Yeah, get the step.
Is that, does that, so they'll get a four-and-a-half percent?
Right.
But so will the people who just came in?
Yes. What?
What did they say?
All right, hold it. One, one at a time.
Sorry.
No, I'm, I'm, if somebody has an answer, it's up to you if you want one of your people to-
The state at the bottom, like, all the 15 RNs, they're all at the current, with the current first step there, they're all going to go up. But in that range, I have nurses that have been at Gracel for six months, or a year or less, and nurses that have been at Gracel for 15. So yes, they're all going to go up one step, but they're all going to be the same range one.
All right. Val, I appreciate you answering, but for now, I need to recognize people.
Can you comment on that and clarify that?
Go ahead.
Well, if people are working there, and they, they're in the union, and they get a step, that'll he, that'll help you retain them, won't it?
I hear what you're saying. I just wanted to know if that was accurate. Thank you.
Miss, if you have a question for the executive, ask them.
At times in other industries, they're allowed to do salary reviews to correct the disparity that she was referring to. Is that allowed in the county, or is that governed by contract?
Well-
Because, what, uh, just for example, when I was at a hospital, they allowed you to do a review to see maybe if your education or your years of service weren't matching up, or you weren't being fairly compensated, and so they would allow those layers of people to be interviewed or reviewed.
You, you could do a desk audit. You could do a countywide desk audit. So it's going to be very similar to a reassessment, where there'll be winners, there'll be losers, and there'll be people who stay the same. And, um, you don't really know in advance-
Right.
-who they will be. But I, I agree in principle that we do need to take a look at our-
But my, my question was, is that governed by the unions? Like, would the unions have to agree to that in their contract for that to occur?
Well, yes. They would ultimately have to accept a change in the steps, but if, if the step, if our matrix went upward, I'm sure there would be, uh, it would be easy to modify the contract.
But essentially, I think, just so we're all clear, and you, you've, you've said this, any changes we think of, no matter how good they may be, does have to go through their, their negotiating.
Right.
It's all contractual.
But you, you are now, you are now in the, uh, figuratively speaking, the weeds of the, the entire way we pay in the county. And there, there is some, uh, I, I think, as Ms. Hefner just suggested, there's some good reason to take a look at how we do that. Um, but again, some people are going to win, some people are going to lose, and many people will stay the same. Um, so this is, uh, it's an imperfect, it's an imperfect system that we have. I would like to take a systematic look at it, but you're talking about a years-long project.
Mr. Lot, I believe you had a question for you.
Yes. Just, well, I realize you weren't the, the county exec during its time, they did not ratify a contract. But do you know why, there, there must be a reason they didn't ratify this contract? I mean, was there some, an advantage for, I mean, I don't understand why they wouldn't have fought harder to ratify a contract. Was there something they got at that point that they did not want to get a new contract?
Oh, you mean from the 11 to 15?
Yes, yes.
Well, you have, you have to ask them. My understanding, though, is it was because of the healthcare.
So just, it, just so, uh, so they chose not to get these increases to hang on to their healthcare? Is that what, is that what you're saying? Is that the assumption?
They, well, you, they didn't-
I know you can't speak for them, but I'm trying to figure out why for four years it wasn't a contract. There must have been a reason. There must be an advantage for them not to get a new contract, and I'm kind of wondering what that was.
The only one, the only thing would be to hang on to the healthcare contribution.
And let me just say, I know some folks want to say things, but this, I can't have, it's, it's not wide open. Most of what has happened, and we're talking about, would have to go through your bargaining unit, and, and, um, where you don't, we can't necessarily get in too much into the weeds as, as, as certainly Mr. Green understands. I was negotiating with him, I think, his first contract, when I was on that side. So we, there are things we can get out and talk about, and there's things that the executive is limited in saying to us. But, you know, I agree with what you said. I mean, it would be interesting to understand what the sticking points are. I, I don't know what they are, and I'm sure the staff have their feelings.
Well, I, I think Mr. Lot's, I think Mr. Lot's question was a historical one, and not with respect to this particular contract.
Correct. To understand how we got to where we're at.
Right.
There's 15%.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think over the years, a lot of things have been done with pay and percentages, and, uh, but, um, I'm going to let Mr. Warner go. He hasn't yet, and then you after Mr. Warner.
No, I think, and Mr. McClure, I'm sure knows this, the contract negotiating should be private with the labor management, there's no, you know, there's no question there. However, I believe there was a, for eight years, there was a freeze for the RNs, uh, uh-
No.
No? There was no contract freeze?
They're shaking their hands.
Okay. I might have that wrong.
No, they're, they're represented.
What do you mean?
They're in a union.
But what does that have to do with a freeze?
Nothing.
Okay.
No, it had to do with the last contracts.
What happens if they don't ratify, or they don't agree to this contract?
They work under the old ones.
Then they work under the old one, and they get nothing.
Well, they, nothing new, no.
Nothing new. So that's why you're saying they have to sign this one?
Well, no, I, they don't have to.
Well, no, 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 not have to, but to get anything.
I, I really want them to, because I want them to get into the healthcare. And I want them to get the eight-and-a-half percent over the three years.
Mm-hmm.
And then there'll be another contract after that.
Three years from now? I got you.
All right. So, I mean, is, are there any que, I mean, I think the executive is speaking from there, and we've heard-
Really want them to have the healthcare.
But this is the last and final best.
Yes.
There's no renegotiation after this.
No.
This is it.
No, we can't afford, listen, we, we can't afford to break faith with the 1,100 people that have already ratified their contracts, who are in the new healthcare. We have to be able to pay for them.
Right.
So, you know, you have deputy sheriffs who agreed to this very pattern, who serve warrants at night for violent criminals who are risking their lives. As much as I, I, I am so grateful for what the RNs do, you have deputy sheriffs who agreed to this contract who are risking their lives. You've got young women just out of college, working in children and youth, going into a neighborhood on a snowy night, taking five children out of a volatile home. That's a dangerous job, right? Their lives are on, health and lives are on the line, too. They agreed to this pattern because they understood that this health, nobody gets this healthcare, by the way. Nowhere is healthcare getting better for employees, public or private. This is actually an improvement, and this is what I really want for them. I want them to get into this.
Um, so, uh-
I really do.
I mean, you know, go ahead.
I have a quick question.
Mr. McGee, go right ahead.
On the history lesson, okay, during the last four years or five years, there was no ratification under the steelworkers' contract? No.
There was.
There, okay, I'm just asking-
No, between 11 and 15, yeah.
I'm just asking a question to be-
Let's, he has a direct question to the executive.
It's between 11 and 15, where the 15, 15 and a half percent was lost.
Okay. Was there any other, um, unions that, that also did not?
During that time? I don't think so.
Not to our 20, not to our 10.
No. There may have been some arbitrations.
Okay.
Because, you know, and two administrations ago, they wouldn't negotiate at all, so everything went, Mr. Stoffel took, Mr. Stoffel took the position.
So my point is, my point is, everybody else did get a step because they, they ratified their contract, or they-
Right.
-ratified their contract. That's what I was talking about.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, so, any questions for the executive? Any other questions?
Just, uh, one quick point. Um, Mr. McClure raised the issue about a job study. One was done, I, I believe it was back in 2007. It was done by the Hay Group, and exactly what Mr. McClure indicated is what happened. The employees who were going to get an increase were happy, those who were going to stay, stay the same, didn't care, and those who were, uh, I believe they were red circled or so, something to that effect. Well, they were here at a meeting.
Yes.
And I remember that quite well. Um, so I, I agree with you, I don't, I mean, it, it might be nice as, in, in, as an academic exercise to do the study, but the reality is, is that this is a collective bargaining issue. And I understand exactly what, what has happened here. I'm in a collective bargaining unit with bus drivers and secretaries, uh, and, uh, and the custodial staff. And there are issues that affect me as a teacher that have no bearing on what they do, and, and so compromises have to be reached as part of that process. And I think that, that's what I, I hear here. And the other part, I think that maybe Mrs. Zarinsky doesn't, Ms. Zarinsky doesn't understand is, uh, or what the issue here is, a step versus a percentage. If your bargaining unit gives you, or agrees to percentage increases, there are employees that will come in at the same rate if you continue to accept percentages rather than steps.
Right, I understand that.
This step that, that Mr. McClure is, is offering is something that had not been done in years. Now, we did try previously to, uh, make a differentiation at four years, while the people that were here for three and three-quarters years weren't happy with that. So what Mr. McClure tried to do is, is give everyone that step. Now, are there going to be winners and losers? There always are. Um, so, I, you know, uh, it's part of the process, so I, I appreciate what you're doing.
I get it.
And, you know, just in reply to you, Ms. Kuzik, you and I both know this, Mr. Kuzik, these are the best of the best here. I mean, they told us, they come to work, these folks come to work, they're not, these folks are not the problem. They really aren't. And I wish I could give them more money. I really do.
Is there anything else you have, Mr. Executive?
Nope, I'm done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, I think we all got a good education on how this, this all works. And to the employees, I want to thank you for coming in. I mean, your concerns, I just want to assure you, have not fallen on deaf ears, in the sense of, we, we are all concerned, and we were talking about that before this meeting. Uh, and, uh, we're, we're going to all have to come together and figure out how we might be able to make things work, hopefully better for as many people as possible. But thank you again, and, uh, don't hesitate to give us any information you feel relevant. All right. Thank you, Mr. Executive. Now I'm going to go on to old business. And before we start, let me just say, um, there is a consideration of a resolution regarding an amendment to Article 18, 2M of the Lehigh-Northampton Airport Authority bylaws. Before anyone says anything, this is on the table. There will be no discussion on this in any way, shape, or form unless a motion is made to take it off the table, that motion is seconded, and there is a majority vote taking it off the table. So, does anyone want to take this off the table? Oh, seeing, seeing no motion, we'll move on. Uh, is there any other old business to discuss?
Wait a second.
Hold on, just a second. Do you understand what I just said?
No, I don't.
You have to untable it.
Oh, I have to untable it, because we tabled it.
It was tabled, there is no discussion in it.
Oh.
That's what I just said, so I mean-
I didn't understand that, I'm sorry. I'm still trying to wrap my head around what just happened.
Okay, so-
So, yeah, I would like to untable this.
You're making a motion to take it off the table.
I'm going to make a motion to untable this, thank you.
Is there a second to her motion? Seeing none? The effort lacks for, dies for lack of a second. Is there any other old business to discuss? Seeing none? New business. Introduction of an ordinance removing two members from the Gracel Advisory Board. I believe, Ms. Hefner, could you introduce this?
Whereas on February 22nd, 2017, County Council appointed Ms. Rosemary Fair and Mr. Kenneth Sun to the Gracel Advisory Board, and on February 22nd, 2019, the County Executive requested that, um, Rosemary Fair and Kenneth Sun be removed from the Gracel Advisory Board as they have been absent from three consecutive meetings within the last six months. Now therefore, it is hereby ordained and enacted that the Northampton County Council that Mrs. Rosemary Fair and Mr. Kenneth Sun shall and are removed as members of the Gracel Advisory Board.
Is there a second, Mr. Dietz? There will be a public hearing debate, and a possible vote on this at our April 4th meeting. Second is an introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the County Council of Northampton County authorizing the purchase of 8.7 acres of real property by the County of Northampton and Plainfield Township, Pennsylvania, from Anthony P. Curcio, Curcio, Thomas M. Curcio and Richard J. Curcio. Someone want to introduce this?
I would like to introduce it. Sorry.
Ms. Zarinsky will introduce it, or will you second?
Yes.
All right. It's been, uh, ordinance was introduced and seconded. There'll be a public hearing and debate and possible vote on April 4th council meeting. And the third item is the introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance reaffirming and ratifying the County of Northampton's participation in the Pennsylvania county's risk pool and the execution of the intergovernmental agreement pursuant to the Pennsylvania intergovernmental cooperation law as amended. Someone want to introduce this?
I do.
Second.
All right. Ms. Hefner introduces, Mr. Kuzik seconds. Again, this will be a public hearing, debate, and possible vote at the April 4th meeting. Next, we have consideration of a waiver of appeals for a property located in Plainfield Township. Oh, I'm sorry, appraisals. Located in Plainfield Township, Pennsylvania. Resolution, who would like to introduce this res, all right? Mr., uh-
Yes, I would.
Okay, this resolution is being introduced by, excuse me, Mr. McGee. Uh, is there any discussion? Seeing none? Ms. Zembo, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Zarinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Excuse me. All right. Next, we have consideration of personnel request resolutions. First would be the Department of Community and Economic Development's, Community Development. Mr. McGee, would you introduce the resolution?
Yes. Resolution is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of grant writer, pay grade CS 241A, salary of $50,130, shall be created in the Department of Community and Economic Development effective March 21st, 2019. This was discussed at last night's meeting, or I'm sorry, it was brought up at the Personnel Meeting, and it was moved to full council, and so moved.
Thank you.
And there's also a, there was, somebody asked for a job description. It's included in our package.
Thank you. Discussion.
My only question is that will this grant writer help nonprofits or other members of the community? That's, I'm sure that was brought up at the meeting.
It was, and...
County government will be obviously prioritized, but yes.
Absolutely, right.
But municipal governments and nonprofits, to the extent the grant writer can assist, will... That's our idea.
This grant writers should be able to pull in enough money to pay their own salaries.
We hope that's the case.
It's wishing and hoping. Okay. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. Next, we'll move on. Mr. McGee, we have a resolution regarding the Department of Human Services. There are two, I believe.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of human resources analyst, pay grade HS 41, salary of $53,958, shall be eliminated. And one full-time position of accountant, two, pay grade HS 38A, salary $47,284, shall be created in the Department of Human Services effective March 21st, 2019. And this was discussed also at last night's Personnel Meeting.
Okay.
And moved to full council, and so moved.
Thank you. Discussion on this particular position, seeing no discussion? Let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine, nine to zero.
Thank you. Mr. McGee, I believe you have a second.
Resolution, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of caseworker three, pay grade PS 37A, salary of $44,341, shall be eliminated. One full-time position of MR Program Specialist, one, pay grade of HS 391A, salary of $49,411, shall be created in the Department of Human Service Mental Health Early Intervention and Development Program Division effective March 21st, 2019. We also discussed this last night's committee meeting and moved it to full council, so moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Now, we have a Sheriff's Department position. Mr. McGee?
Resolution, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical specialist, pay grade CR 174D, salary of $35,870, shall be upgraded to one full-time position of administrative specialist, pay grade CR 184D, salary of $37,560 in the Sheriff's Department effective March 21st, 2019. This was also discussed at the committee meeting, and the administrative head came in and explained the reason for the change. And it was moved to full council, so moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on this position? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have consideration of a resolution accepting a donation to the Northampton County Problem Solving Courts. Mr. Warner, would you introduce this resolution?
Yeah. Whereas Partners for a New Beginning is a nonprofit organization that has wished to make donations in the amount of $1,000 to Northampton County Problem Solving Courts. Now, therefore, it be resolved by Northampton County that it does hereby accept the donation for the Northampton County Problem Solving Courts. And Mr. Dally spoke, Judge Dally spoke on this, and it was moved forward.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. Now, what we have is the, excuse me for a second. I just want to double check something, just so we're rolling along here. This is...
It's a hungry dog.
Yeah, just wanted to be sure. Just wanted to be sure of something. You don't want to step in the deep water without knowing it. Consideration of a resolution accepting a donation to the Department of Corrections. Mr. Lot, why don't you do that since you're our representative?
Okay. Whereas Cigar Club Incorporated is a nonprofit organization raising funds and collecting essential supplies to support our local K-9 units. Whereas a donation of dog food and essential supplies in the amount of $1,006.24 was received from the Sheepdog Cigar Club Incorporated for the Department of Corrections K-9 Dana.
Danny.
Danny, I'm sorry, Danny. That's our dog. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby accept the donation of $1,006.24 in dog food and essential supplies on behalf of Northampton County Department of Corrections K-9, Danny.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? This was passionately advocated for by an official from the prison, saying, "We got to feed the dog." So, seeing no discussion, call for a vote.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Consideration of a resolution adopting the Lehigh Valley Hazardous Mitigation...
Ms. Warner?
What did I skip?
Open space.
Open space.
Consideration of a resolution, amending resolution number 40-2015. Ms. Zirinsky, would you introduce this?
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the safety fencing replacement project. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County 21st Century Open Space Initiative, or his designee, is directed to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further directs the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $11,424.50 as the Northampton County contribution to the safety fencing replacement project.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz? Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Consideration of a resolution adopting the Lehigh Valley Hazardous Mitigation Plan. Ms. Zirinsky, would you like to introduce that?
Mr. Heckman, I realize it's out of order, but may I be right?
Yes.
Is Mr. Weaver still there? Yeah. I just want to congratulate Mr. Weaver. He has been the driving force in Northampton County to get this done. The hazard mitigation plan needs to be updated every five years. The last time it was done, 38 Lehigh Valley municipalities participated. This time, 62 of our Lehigh Valley municipalities have participated. I believe we are going to be the last ones to approve it. And so, once we approve it, it will be in place. And I cannot thank Mr. Weaver enough for his efforts. And I wanted to let you know that he's here if you have any questions for him. I would also say that Mr. Weaver understands the rules, the FEMA and PIMA rules, and how municipalities need to comply with the regulations in order to be reimbursed. And he has gone out and educated those folks, and he should be commended for that. Thank you, Mr. Heckman. I apologize.
Fine. Thank you, Mr. Weaver, for all your efforts. Oh, yeah. Could you introduce the...
Sure. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body for the County of Northampton. One, the Lehigh Valley 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan is hereby adopted as the official hazard mitigation plan of the county. Two, the respective officials and agencies identified in the implementation strategy of the Lehigh Valley 2018 Hazard Mitigation Plan are hereby directed to implement the recommended activities assigned to them.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Weaver is here. Mr. Kuzik, would you like Mr. Weaver to come forward?
I was just going to say, we do have some students that are still here. And I think this would be a good educational opportunity to introduce them to what a hazard mitigation plan is and why we adopt it. If you could say a few words, I think we might have a few interested ears in the audience.
Well, good evening. It was a big feat. It was a cooperative effort between Lehigh-Northampton and with the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission to help assemble and collect a lot of that data to put this plan together. Tell them your role and what your duties are. Tell them what your job title, so they know who you are. I'm the Director of Emergency Management for Northampton County. And our role is big. We do everything from mitigation and prevention of hazards to preparedness, to response, and recovery. It's kind of a cycle for us. So, we go from mitigation, prepare, response, recovery. We're actually in recovery right now from the August storms, and we're going into mitigation at the same time. Mitigation is just a fancy way of helping people to lessen hazards, lessen loss, or even prevent some loss, depending on the type of hazard. We can't necessarily prevent all the loss, but we can maybe make it a little bit better or make those communities a little bit more resilient. And there's all kinds of methods of doing it, from property protection to public education. Right now, my staff is assisting with Nurture Nature, educating people on the hazard mitigation plan. They're on their third tour. They're missing me, but that's all right, because that's going to go on. So, they're up in Bangor doing that with a grant with the school district, so that's pretty great. So, we're partnering with them for public awareness and education. Some natural resource protection, because we keep those natural resources there. It may make some, lessen some of the flooding. Emergency services, response, and some structural projects. Right now, with the mitigation project going on, and we're working on some grants for actually raising and structural acquisition, taking those homes out of the floodway or helping improve that. It may be one, it may be two, but it's less that we have to worry about during this time of disaster, and we help improve that. So, with that, this plan is required by federal law. Every five years, we're to review the plan, adopt it, look at our hazards, rerank them, and come up with some strategies. It's interesting, if you go online, you look at our website, each community has an appendancy with their strategies, ideas, and goals. Just because they're all in there doesn't mean they'll achieve them all. But with those strategies, they can at least start getting away and help mitigating it. The other thing that helps drive this, in order to get mitigation grant money or pre-disaster mitigation grant money, every municipality has to adopt one. And if they don't adopt one, they're not eligible for grants. So, we kind of ran into that in that last 2013, that we only had 38 municipalities out of the Lehigh Valley participate. And there were some disappointed municipalities when they wanted to apply for grants for generators, and it wasn't available. Now, we've actually already started the process in applying for grants as the county and assisting the other local municipalities in doing some grant projects. I think Fry's Run is one of them that was washed out during the flooding. Simple things of generators at municipal buildings and stuff like that. So, and if their project's not in here because they're participating, every year we have to review it. They submit a letter of intent saying that they're going to add, modify this. Our hazard mitigation manager will put it in, send it to PIMA, and PIMA gets approved, so then it can get added to the plan when we do the update. So, it is an ongoing process. So, I appreciate you hopefully adopting this.
Was that presentation...
I could go on.
Did the teachers find that acceptable? All right. Thank you very much. And it was a teachable moment. Are there any other questions for Mr. Weaver? All right. Thank you, sir. All right. His response, obviously, as the students can tell, his responsibility is, in today's jargon, bigly. So, all right. No further discussion? Call for the vote, Simba?
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right. I'm pretty sure of this. Is there any other new business to discuss? Does anyone on council want to bring up anything? See, no one? Yes, sir?
I'd just like to thank all the people that got nominated to fill the positions earlier today.
Oh, okay. Good. They agree?
Thank you, everybody.
All right. No other new business? We'll go on to County Council Committee Reports. Who would like to give a County Council Committee Report?
I think most of us were at the Open Space Committee today. And we just, we approved the resolutions that were put forth already, so...
Tara, I can't. Most of us were at the Open Space Committee today.
I wasn't there.
You weren't. We saw you come in. But we approved the resolutions that were put up from that... What's his name?
But it's not...
Curcio's property was purchased. We've acquisition that. No, we haven't. We haven't. But we voted for the resolution, honestly. What else did we do? Oh, I attended the board meeting for the... Conservation Districts. And yes, the low-level dirt and gravel roads were discussed. And you missed that, too. But that's okay. You can watch the presentation.
I will watch it on video, Tara.
Yes, it's riveting. Low-level gravel. You could learn so much from that presentation.
Now that I'm back, I just have one question. You're not Open Space anymore? You have a new title?
You're right. It is called...
You can talk to her after the meeting.
Yes. It's called Energy, Environment, and Land Use. Thank you.
Just pulling your...
I think, I think you were very clear in...
I tried to be concise.
Very clear on what you just said. So, is there any other committee report?
I have one. Human Services met also prior to this meeting. We discussed Gracestale at length, as well as another issue. But the important news is that on April 4th at 3:30 PM, we will have our next Human Services meeting because of a conflict on the third Thursday of April. So, there'll be a time change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hefner, any other council committee reports? No one? Okay. We'll move to...
No, sorry.
Council Liaison Reports?
Oh, yes. I attended the Finance, Business, and Executive Meetings at the airport today. And we discussed the financial well-being of the airport and also several projects that they're planning, one of which is going to happen on the runway. And they're going to close the runway in May 20th through the 22nd, I believe. That's the date. And we also did discuss the policy that we did, that I had untabled and we did not vote on about the sexual orientation being added to the bylaws. And that is going to happen on April 26th. And I'm just concerned that that is a protected class for a marginalized group that we did not recognize and support. And I know that our executive has written a letter, and I appreciate that very much. I know that the executive from Lehigh County has written a letter. And I believe that they will be present. I don't know. April 26th. It's a big day. Look at your calendar. See if you're available. Anybody else want to attend?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Tell us about Brayden. Has there been any discussions?
We did discuss Brayden.
Thank you.
Nothing's happening there right now. And that's what we discussed.
That was one of your best...
I'm just being honest.
Ms. Zirinsky, that was one of the best things I heard tonight. Thank you.
That's what we discussed. Nothing's happening there. We would like...
Thank you for that report. I appreciate it.
No, we would like something to happen there. We discussed with Tom Stout today about what possibilities there could be. And we were excited that this is going to be a topic of discussion in the future because it's very important to Chuck DiCon.
I think Ms. Zirinsky made it clear Brayden Airport is still there.
It is still there.
Are there any other liaison reports? I just, oh, go ahead.
The Lehigh Valley Economic Development had their annual gala last night. And then they had their meeting prior to it. They put out a really nice video to promote the Lehigh Valley and trying to encourage businesses to come in and do business here. That's kind of their plight now and their quest for... And also, it was the most attended gala ever. They mentioned that. Yeah. And Senator Bob Casey came by to say hi. But they are, they did throw some statistics out as far as the millennials that are moving into the area and how important that is, you know, for job creation because that attracts companies to come in. So, they're really focusing on a lot of that, how to retain them. And also, Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, the Executive Committee met today. Actually, the new Vice President actually chaired the committee because the president wasn't available today. He did a great job. They're also looking at consolidating, unifying some of the municipalities so they can, you know... I actually didn't bring my notes. I just wanted to comment. On that one, I didn't. I left it in. But I can report a little bit more on that at my next meeting. But what they're doing, actually, they had a Slate Belt Rising meeting last night. And, you know, they're making some headway with unifying these municipalities